Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to begin the 2021 reorganization ceremony for the Leon County Board of County Commissioners. The time is 3:01 PM. Before the invocation, I want to welcome Clerk of Courts Gwen Marshall, who will be conducting the reorganization of the board vote later in the program. I'd also like to recognize with us here this afternoon, we've got Property Appraiser Akin Akinyeme, Supervisor Elections Mark Early, and School Board Member Daryl Jones. Welcome. Thank you for being here. I'd now like to recognize Pastor Brad Clayton of Faith Presbyterian Church to lead the invocation. Pastor, thank you for being here, sir.
Thank you so much for inviting me. Please pray with me. Oh God, our Creator, let me gather today as humble people, thankful for the gifts of this community that sustain us every day. We give you thanks for life, for our resources, and for our freedom. But most of all this day, we give you thanks for home. We give you thanks that we have a place to call home in Leon County, a place where we belong, a place where we can live out our calling as your children. God, we give you thanks for a home where we can love our neighbors as ourselves. We give you thanks for a home where public servants and first responders keep us safe, where teachers help us learn, and doctors and nurses keep us healthy. We give you thanks for a home where the simplest, most humble work can support the greater good. We thank you for our home where we can put down roots and pursue our dreams. We give you thanks for a home where we can live with kindness and humility. And we give you thanks for the chance and the opportunity to live side by side with others who are pursuing their dreams too. God, we give you thanks for these public servants who have accepted this call to lead. Bless them and guide them in their work. Help them to be mindful not only of their friends, but also of strangers. Not only to be mindful of the greatest, but also the least of these. For our community is stronger when strangers and neighbors lean on each other and work together for the common good. We pray this all in the name of God who created us, who loves us, and who never lets us go. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Pastor Clayton. Thank you for being here.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic where it stands one nation under God, equal and equal with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Commissioners, it's now my pleasure to recognize four of our colleagues for their years of exceptional service to our great community. Commissioner Welch and Commissioner Cummings, who have each served this commission for one year. Mr. Jackson, who has served this commission now for five years. Like that, right? And lastly, Commissioner Proctor, who served us for, anybody guess? Twenty-five years. Now, will you all please join me at the lecture, the four of you? Okay. It's a great honor to be doing this, by the way. I received my one-year pin a couple of years ago, and it's a good feeling, isn't it, to be here for a full year? Commissioner Welch, I'd like to congratulate you on completing your first year and to thank you for your service to this community. The citizens of northeast Leon County have a strong advocate as both a commissioner and as a teacher. I present to you, sir, Commissioner Welch, would you like to say a few words?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is, as usual, you know, it's only been a year. I was just sharing with my classmate, if you will, Commissioner Cummings, that it's been a fast year. And it is the privilege of a lifetime that we get to serve on this dais and in this chamber. And I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve my constituents in the northeast and try to make our county the best county in Florida, continue to keep it the best county in Florida, and serve with all you wonderful folks. So, thank you very much.
Great. Thank you so much, Commissioner Welch. Congratulations. Commissioner Cummings, thank you for all that you've done this past year to serve our great community, and congratulations on making it a very successful first year. And as a member of the Children's Services Council, you're really terrific. You've been a very important part, a very voice on vaccinations and equity. And I'd like to present to you, ma'am, this one-year service pin. Commissioner Cummings, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, to the members of the Leon County Commission and all of those that are present here today, all the elected officials as well. It has certainly been a delight for me to serve this last year as a Leon County Commissioner at large. And I'm especially grateful and thankful to my fellow commissioners who elected me to be the representative on the Children's Services Council. We have been working hard on that council to make the best decisions for the entire Leon County. So, I appreciate that appointment, and I certainly appreciate the opportunity to just serve the citizens of Leon County during this present age. I believe this last year, we have made some great strides and great accomplishments as a commission, and I look forward to this next year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. Congratulations. Now, we're recognizing the commissioners that have been around longer than I have. Commissioner Jackson, you were chairman during my first year on the commission, and I was really impressed and continue to be admired by your leadership and your voice of reason that you bring to the commission. It matters. It really does, sir. I'd now like to present to you this five-year service pin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, you've done a remarkable job in the last year leading us at a very difficult time. I want to thank all of the Leon County officials that are here. However, I did want to note that these are considered county commission years. And so in those terms, it's seven years for each year. That makes me a 35-year veteran. My good friend, Commissioner Proctor, will then be equal to 175 years. So, I won't take up too much of his talking time at this point. Thank you so much for allowing me to represent not only the citizens of District Two, but also all of the folks that are a part of Leon County and what makes it such a special place to live, work, and play. Thank you.
Last but not least, Vice Chair Proctor, you've worked tirelessly over the last 25 years to serve the citizens of District One and all of Leon County. And I took a moment to kind of think about the big things that were happening 25 years ago in 1996. The top movies that year were Independence Day, the first one, Mission Impossible, the first one, Jerry Maguire. Now, okay, there are two quotes in Jerry Maguire that I think probably encapsulate you, sir. One is, "Show me the money," for your district, for your district. And the other is, "You had me at hello." So, you know, those are awesome quotes. Also in 1996, Oprah started her book club. And 25 years ago today, today, November 9th, the number-one song was "No Diggity" by Blackstreet featuring Dr. Dre. "No Doubt" was actually a big song that year. "No Diggity, No Doubt." Yeah, yeah. So, and last but not least, also in 1996, 25 years ago, Commissioner Proctor, Vice Chair Proctor, became a county commissioner for Leon County. So, sir, thank you for your service. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, members of this board, citizens of the community of Leon. It's been a joy. It's been said that time flies when you're having fun. In the words of the late Reverend J.C. Oliver, a minister at Bethel AME Church, he would say that it just gets gooder and gooder. And I say to you that serving has just gotten gooder and gooder. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Congratulations to all of you. I'd now like to ask Vice Chairman Proctor to conduct this portion of the meeting. Mr. Vice Chairman, I turn the gavel over
Ladies and gentlemen, I want to take a privilege to first thank Chairman Minor for his leadership. Very difficult, complex, unique year in which public officials all over the state of Florida and the nation were learning to conduct meetings virtually via Zoom, and a whole lot of other adjustments that we had to make. The dexterity of vision, flexibility, and adaptability by Chairman Minor has been unusual, and no chairman ever before him has been tasked to be so adroit in reading and adopting and adapting to the moment. Would you please give Chairman Minor a hand for what he has gone through in this Chairman Minor, I have some scripted notes, and I'm not that good at script, but I'm going to do my best today because this is your moment. I want to thank you, and I'd like to end my remarks by saying what a pleasure it's been for all of us to serve with Chairman Minor. Alongside our administrator and our attorney, you have presided over very important county business while we continue to address the COVID-19 pandemic, including initiating one of the first and largest vaccination campaigns to protect citizens against a deadly virus. You have brought more than 1,000 jobs to the area with our support in recruiting Amazon, being the first county in the state to recognize Florida Emancipation Day as a holiday on your clock. Indeed, on your clock, Mr. Chairman, our county has raised the minimum living wage to $14 an hour for all county employees. And on your clock, we have held our property tax mileage rate constant for the 10th year in a row. To commemorate this time, I am honored to present to you a gavel plaque to remember your service as chairman. And as the plaque reads, this is an appreciation for your outstanding and dedicated leadership as chairman from 2020 to 2021. Let us applaud for our chair. I would now like to recognize the county administrator for remarks and then to open comments to each of our commissioners, starting with Commissioner Welch and Cummings and coming around the dais, but we will begin with our county administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Mr. Chairman, let me, on behalf of all the men and women of Leon County government, present you with a collage. It's become sort of a tradition at Leon County for us to, on behalf of, again, the county attorney, all the men and women of Leon County, the Board of County Commissioners, we tried to capture you at just a few of the events highlighting your year. You'll notice that some of the pictures are just a blur because, you know, it represents that we had you go into so many different places in such a hurry. But, you know, you told me that you were going to check with your wife, Jessica, that if you could hang this above the fireplace. I think we'll check with her and see if that's okay.
Thumbs up.
As long as it's not in the fireplace.
Understood, understood. But seriously, Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the organization, we just wanted to thank you for this year, for your steady leadership. As the vice chair said, this was indeed a very challenging year, and just wanted to thank you so much for always being so accessible to us, and again, for your leadership. And with that, I'd like to present you this collage.
Thank you very much, Mr. Administrator. We now want to call on each of our respective commissioners if you would share a word, beginning with you, Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Minor, you know, obviously, as my first year on the county commission, I don't really have a whole lot of perspective for how the chairmanship should look. But I can tell you, as a sponge, as I've soaked up as much as I could over the course of this first year in office, you have set a wonderful example. I feel like you have really guided the ship. You've run the tiller in very rough waters. I feel like sometimes the sand kind of slips through the hourglass, and sometimes it grinds through the hourglass. And I feel like this year has, if it's not been one of the most difficult years to chair a collegial body, man, it certainly has to be near the top, right? I mean, the level of frustration in the community and confusion and everything has just been, you have handled it with a grace and a patience and a statesmanship that I think is truly commendable. And so, for me, as a freshman up here on the dais, it's been wonderful to have your guiding hand to help me, and I just want to thank you for that, and then congratulate you on a great year.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. To Chairman Minor, I just want to thank you for your leadership this past year. You have been stellar in your leadership of this county commission. I want to thank you for embracing me as a new member of the commission as well. There have been a lot of complicated issues, decisions that have had to be made by this commission, but you have stood strong in your leadership of this commission. So, it's no question, the caliber of individual you are, I believe the people of Leon County made a great decision to elect you as one of the county commissioners. And I just applaud you for being not only the great county commissioner you are, but the great individual in person with the heart of giving and with the heart of service for all the citizens of Leon County. So, thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I know when I got this opportunity, I wouldn't have said such nice things at the podium. Commissioner Minor, I would echo some of the thoughts shared by my colleagues. One of the most difficult years to navigate as local leaders. You've done it with a hard, fast, steadfast commitment, and you have put your feet in the sand and planted them, in particular, as the chairman of this board, and some of the stances we have taken to keep people safe during the pandemic. I can't say enough about your leadership and ability to gain consensus amongst this board, which sometimes cannot always be easy. Most particularly, we have something in common in that you have a heart for the least among us, and that shows in much of the work you do and much of the voice you speak on issues. So, thank you so much for that. We are fortunate to have you serving on the commission. Thank you.
Well, as always, we can say ditto, Mr. Chair, because I share the sentiments of all my colleagues. And I will add to that, that this year has not only been difficult, but you've got the difficult stuff and not so much fun stuff. Some of those blurry pictures in your frame there might be because we didn't have as many events. We didn't get to get out in our community as much and see people. And you would have excelled in that role as our chair as well. And I just want to acknowledge what you missed this year because of COVID, because it was difficult, and I'm sure you will get another turn someday. And I look forward to seeing you at the parades and the other events where our chairman takes the leadership role. So, the fun stuff is in the community gatherings and everything and representing this board. I know you would have done an exceptional job, as you did with the rest of our difficult business this year. This is kind of the inside baseball, but even serving as vice chair, you don't really know what it's like to sit at that computer and manage this board. It's not easy, and you get a crash course. And you have done an excellent job. Thank you very much for that. The last thing is that you are a true representative for your district, I think, of the North Monroe Task Force and other issues that you've brought up that are district-specific, but also focused on the whole county. And I think that's really exceptional and very important. Thank you for your service, and thank you for your family as well.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Mr. Chair, I think one of the things that hasn't been mentioned yet is how lonely it can be sitting in that seat. I've watched you make, throughout this year, make some really tough decisions, some that were popular, some that were not. And I've watched you do it with a curiosity that mirrors being a freshman commissioner, which, when you're sitting in that seat for the first time, you kind of feel like it at the same time. So, I've enjoyed seeing you grow in that seat as our chairman, and seeing you come into your own in the way you led and the way you pushed us as a commission. It's hard to lead a commission, a group of six other commissioners, but it's even harder when you're leading through a pandemic. I believe the most of, the most any of us have had to lead through was a hurricane or two. I think Commissioner Jackson might have called it a bit of a pandemic, but to lead the full year through a pandemic is a tough thing to do. And so, I applaud you. I admire the way that you did it, and I enjoyed your steadfastness in what you believed in and pushing us towards the things that you thought that was best for our community. So, great job. Continue to do it, continue to grow, and continue to have that curiosity that you had as chairman as you take the seat as commissioner for the rest of your career. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chairman, you get a little sense of the tone and tenor of remarks. Maybe at your funeral services, it might sound like it was so somber. But I'm glad that your wife heard all of those kind things, you know, about you. And she heard firsthand the sentiments poured from our hearts to you. And we hope that you have absorbed just the smallest meaning and degree of sincerity with which we've conveyed to you how much we respect and thank you. Would you like to say something at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, and thanks to all of you for your comments. It means a lot. It really does. Now that my time as chairman is coming to an end, I want to thank each of you for your support this past year. First, to Vincent Chastity, thank you both for your expert leadership and counsel. It's first-rate. You've heard me say this before, but I think we've got the best county administrator, and now I think we've got the best county attorney, among the very best in the entire state of Florida, right here in Leon County. You and your dedicated team of county staff, they continue to set the standard for local governments everywhere. Thank you for everything you do to make this county such a great place to live. Second, I want to thank the citizens of Leon County who allow us to serve them. And finally, I want to thank you to my fellow commissioners for being so supportive. I'm honored to serve with you. It really is an honor. As I look back at my time as chairman, I'm so proud of the board's collective efforts. You know, together, we have continued to lead the pandemic response with PPE resources to businesses and healthcare workers, vaccination campaigns, and assistance to support families struggling during the pandemic with Leon Cares and ERA. We've brought more than 1,000 well-paying jobs to the community with the Amazon Fulfillment Center. We've addressed period poverty by using our county facilities with the county and the city of Tallahassee, but also with a really great group of community leaders. Jody Wilkoff, my chief of staff, has been one. Really tremendous progress on period poverty in this community. We also approved the Essential Libraries Initiative to address the changing needs of the community. And we continue to support programs that create more affordable housing options for our citizens. You know, that's an incredible list of accomplishments in a year for this Board of County Commissioners and our county administrator and his staff and our county attorney. And that's just scratching at the surface of an incredible year that we've had. A difficult one, but a very productive one. I had a difficult childhood, not as hard as many. I'm not saying that, but it was challenging for me. I lived with different parents at different times and then ended up not living with any of them, and lived with some friends of mine throughout my high school years. And to survive, I had to develop this independence. I took pride in doing everything by myself. You know, I was 13, 14, 16, thinking, "I'm doing this by myself. I'm getting through it." But to the point where that still is my default behavior, if I'm not careful. But as I grew up, I realized that that's not really a way to live. If you think back on your biggest accomplishments in life, all those things that you're most proud of have been when you're doing it with a team. And that's what this year has been for me. This year has reminded me that the things that we are most proud of, the things that the commission, I think, achieved the most, the most good we do for the people that live here, are when we work together as a team. Now, don't get me, I'm not talking about a 7-0 vote. I'm talking about us working collectively. We can argue, and we can have differences. We can vote, split votes. But this year, to be chairman, it's been a very healthy reminder for me that teamwork, together with you on the commission, with our county staff, is really what makes all the difference. Deep inside me, I still have that thing like, "I need to do this myself." But I know, I've known for years, but as I grew up, it's a constant reminder that the things you're most proud of are the things you do as a team. So, I want to thank all of you for working, for allowing me to serve as your chair for this past year. I thank the county and county staff and the public, because we don't do this by ourselves. We work hand-in-hand with every single person that lives in this county that shares their voice on what they want the future of the county to be. So, thank you all for allowing me to serve as your chairman for this past year. And with that, I'll hand it back to Vice Chair Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this is a very significant moment, and I wouldn't want sorrow of the heart to be cast upon Chastity, and I omitted giving her an opportunity to make comment. Chastity, if you would like to make a comment, forgive
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Chairman Minor, it's been a pleasure to work with you. It's only my second year as county attorney, but I feel like the ability to work with you, coordinate with you, and really provide counsel to you this year was why I went into public service to begin with. And I've really enjoyed working with you this year, and I enjoy looking forward to working with you as a commissioner again.
Likewise.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'd like to recognize Clerk of Courts Ms. Gwen Marshall and ask if she would please lead us in the reorganization ceremony.
Good afternoon, everyone. Before we begin the election, I too would like to express congratulations to Commissioner Minor on a successful year as chair of the county commission. I also would like to thank the commissioners for their support of the clerk's office during this challenging year, and thank county administrator Long, as well as deputy county administrator Rosen Swag, for their continued support of the clerk's office. And definitely will not forget you, Attorney Osteen. She has led a lot of our county emergency meetings during these difficult times with her legal advice, and we appreciate your leadership role. And we appreciate your leadership role in those meetings as well. But if I may, I also would like to, I would be remissed if I wouldn't acknowledge my team, who supports me and assists me in supporting the county. So, quickly, if I may ask, some of my chief operating officer, Kenneth Kent. I think we have the chief financial officer of the county, Ed Burke, in the room as well. Would you please stand? Because y'all see their names all the time, but you, these are the machines behind the scene, as well as Travis Stevens. He's our Assistant Finance Director. And I definitely would have to acknowledge our Board Secretary, Beryl Woods. She's been here with you on many nights, long nights, during these meetings, as well as her assistant, Becky Gonzalez. So, thank you again for your support. And I look forward to working with you in the upcoming years. Now, we may begin the election of the 2021-22 New York. At this time, do, I will open the floor. Do we have any nominations for chair? Commissioner Maddox.
I'd like to make a motion for Commissioner, Mr. Vice Chair, Bill Proctor, to be our chair.
We have a second by Commissioner Dozier. Do we have any other nominations? We'll close the nominations at this time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same size. Hearing none, congratulations, Commissioner Bill Proctor. You are the Chair of the 2021-22 County Commission. Now, we'd like to open nominations for vice chair. At this time, do we have any nominations for vice chair? Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Commons. Do we have any other nominations? Hearing none, the nominations are closed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same size. Congratulations, Commissioner Maddox. You are the Vice Chair for the 2021-22 New York County Commission. At this time, I will ask Commissioner Proctor if you would join me at the lectern. And could I ask his family to step forward as well? All right, I need you to place your right hand on the Bible and repeat aye for me. When I say aye, state your name. Aye?
Aye.
State your name.
Bill Proctor.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
And affirm.
That I will well.
I will well.
And faithfully execute.
And faithfully execute.
The duties of this office.
The duties of this office.
Of Chairman of Leon County Board.
Of Chairman of Leon County Board.
Of County Commissioners.
County Commissioners.
To the best of my ability.
To the very best of my ability.
So help me God. Congratulations. My pleasure to introduce our 2021-22 Chair of the Leon County Board of County Commissioners, Commissioner Proctor.
Let the commission chamber say amen. Good. I want to thank you, commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, one and all, for your support. And I look forward to working with all of you over the next year. I am confident that through the board's vision and with the leadership of the county administrator and county attorney, we can continue to effectively address the needs of our community and serve the citizens of our great community. Commissioners, I come before you today accepting your assignment as Chairman of Leon County Board of County Commissioners. The grim realities of science and math compels intelligent policymakers to fight with everything within our capacity to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the public. I endeavor with unyielding resolve to encourage and to lead our government in the public's interest. As we begin the new commission and budget year, heading into the frenzy, the fog, and spin of a pending election year, I remind you colleagues what time it is in our nation and in the state of Florida. Please let us remain clear of our mission to provide for the health, safety, and welfare of citizens. Grim data, but realities we as policymakers must confront. The context of our starting point is clear. And I quote published reports from the USA Today, published in today's local newspaper. 3,701,310 people have tested positive for the coronavirus since the pandemic began. 60,334 people have died from the coronavirus disease in Florida. In Leon County, 51,738 persons have been positively infected with Corona since the pandemic began. Ladies and gentlemen and commissioners, the pervasive widespread nature of COVID-19 spans the American continent from sea to shining sea. Forty-six million, four hundred eighty-seven thousand and change. People have tested positive in the United States for coronavirus disease. The death total, I will omit. But last week, 69,000 Americans were hospitalized. The week before, 69,000 Americans were hospitalized. Four weeks ago, 84,700 Americans were hospitalized. And no doubt, scientific, medical, and mathematical data compels astute citizens to remain vigilant in guarding against a hostile and deadly enemy of the people. The soundness of thought calculated within the minds of many Floridians is also revealed through mathematical reflection. Toxic messaging and advisement from this state's highest leaders and institutions are spreading rampant, bogus mistruths against the CDC, the Centers for Disease Control, its anti-COVID-19 guidelines. But I believe in God. And I believe in love, truth, and mercy as attributes of God's Holy Spirit. And through the boundless piles of toxicity directed into the minds of Floridians, still, the CDC reports that through it all, all of the bogus comments, all of the bogus mistruths, 69.5% of Floridians have received one or more doses of vaccines to immunize themselves against the harmful effects of coronavirus. In our nation, 67.4% of the people have likewise arrived at a decision point to take at least one dose of the vaccine. Why do I refer to the data of science, medicine, and mathematics today? I do so, friends, because it is good to know that 70% of Floridians in Florida's population is aligned and following the bright side of darkness and the right side of science and medicine. Seeing that we are encompassed by such a great cloud of witnesses, we have the wherewithal to go forward in faith because compassion, love, truth, and mercy merges with our side. Going forward nearly 100 hours ago, the United States House of Representatives passed an over $1 trillion infrastructure legislative package. As chairman, I am proposing a seven-person ad hoc infrastructure slash build back better special committee to ascertain securing monies for Leon County's infrastructure needs. We must advance and align our efforts in harmony with federal guidelines to gather the resources soon to be made available to assist American communities to overcome and move forward. I will share greater details at our forthcoming retreat. I suggest a four-month lifespan, unless warranted, for extension. Secondly, today broadband, the divide between our nation's haves and have more's and our nation's have less will be exacerbated along the lines of access to broadband and to the super information highway. Not all of Leon County is created equally pertaining to broadband access. This is why I propose assembling a savvy broadband panel who will be tasked to grapple with making broadband accessible across areas that are currently left out and left behind and denied broadband access in Leon County. Moreover, billions of dollars have been provided in the infrastructure bill passed on Friday night. However, prior to the passage of that legislation, there were various pockets of money that had been placed in agencies to do pilot programs and special demonstration projects related to rural areas. And I seek the team, a team approach, just like what Mr. Minor has called for and suggested, that we have a team approach organized to identify and go after funding for broadband services for much more of our geographic community. The broadband select committee, we have a lifespan of nine months, unless warranted or extension. Commissioners, I do propose a panel on mental health to serve a special stint of seven months, unless extension is warranted. Further, I propose a blue ribbon panel on COVID-19 to become the advisory council that should be, but is not a role fulfilled by other agencies in our state. To say this is not to cast shade. It acknowledges the multiple dynamics of misinformation, disinformation, silence, and the legal and political sable rattling from across the street. Make that sable rattling from across the street. The east side of Monroe Street, the state government of Florida, the east side of Monroe Street, I'm sorry, the west side of Monroe Street, the state government of Florida must endeavor. Must. Ladies and gentlemen, forgive the commission chairman. The east side of Monroe Street is the county government. And we must endeavor to remain tight and right in our quest to hold up truth's banner in the march to sustain the health, safety, and welfare of Leon County's on. The west side of Monroe Street, the state government of Florida elevates minimally qualified public health leaders and maintains an inane political framework that marginalizes the health and safety of Floridians. We must free the state of Florida from incompetence, arrogance, and political carpetbaggers so that another 60,000 Floridians need not die. We do this by exercising excellent judgment, common sense, inspired by, infused with science and medicine. Walk with me, commissioners. We need and our community is gifted with expert scientific and medical voices who can assert competent, objective directions and guidance equal to or exceeding the CDC. Finally, I say that President Barack Obama's passionate plea to our nation and world. Our president, two days ago, asked that the world come together to stave off our globe reaching a tipping point that creeps rapidly upon the threshold of a state of no return. I will often share more discussion at our commission retreat. So, what do I want? I like to see us pursue aggressively broadband, mental health, infrastructure and BBB, COVID-19, and posture ourselves to address and confront global warming and climate control. In addition to all that we are tasked to do, I beg your interest this coming year and ask you to walk with me as chairman that we galvanize the intellectual resources of the nation's top-rated public institutions of higher learning. We got two of the faddest institutions of higher learning, highly ranked in their respective categories of service than anybody can call upon anywhere in the world. Moreover, let us engage the citizenry of America's 12th-ranked most educated community in the United States. We have here the intellectual capital to be bold for a time such as this. Friends, community, and colleagues, I am confident we will rise to the occasion to meet challenges and to collectively solve problems. We must not let one another down. And we ain't gonna let this community down. We are a great institution. Our staff is superb. Our community is fantastic. Our assets are phenomenal. Our board is a jewel, the best. It has been said that to those who have been given much, much is required. The coalescence of these collective attributes, not even the sky is our limit. Colleagues, P. O'Brien said it a few years ago, and I'll say it right now. I feel like reaching, reaching for the sky. Let's keep free the county of Leon and let us free from captivity the state of Florida. And may God help us, stand beside us, and guide us through the night with a light from above and lead us forward to brighter days. Thank you. Commissioners, we will now recess and gather for a photo op here in the front of the dais. the desk. And we are not, due to COVID, we will not have a reception this afternoon. I don't like that, you know, that we're not having a reception on my watch, you know? You had a reception. So I've become the first chair that didn't have, oh my. We thank you for your presence. We're going to take a, I seek a motion that we have a recess, a brief recess. Okay. It's been moved, seconded, hearing no discussion at all. We recognize that we are in recess. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Vice Chairman, I have a meeting that I've got to get started here. And Ms., you ready?
I'm ready.
You ready? Ladies and gentlemen, we want to thank you for coming out to the Board of County Commissioners meeting on this November 9th, 2021. We have an exciting agenda, information that some of us have never heard, and I just can't wait to get started. Mr. County Administrators, are there anything you wanted to do to lift our hopes and spirits before we just dive in?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First up, under awards and presentation, we have scheduled to hear from our Supervisors of Elections, Mark Early.
Mr. Early, you're recognized. Supervisor Early.
Commissioner Proctor, Chairman Proctor.
Yes, sir.
It's a pleasure to address your commission. Vice Chairman Nick Maddox, always a pleasure to see you. We've worked very closely together on our canvassing boards. Outgoing Chairman Minor, thanks, and I'd like to express the thanks to the entire county commission and to the staff. You all have been wonderful partners. It's something my office and our voters are getting great value from, and frankly, as I often say, I think we're the envy of the state in how well we all work together. You make our success possible by being knowledgeable about elections and, you know, really listening and learning and not being afraid to stand up and, you know, put out some money when it's needed, but just, you know, really be our advocates as, you know, as much as possible. And I think you do a great job of that, and I really value that. So I want to say thank you for that. We've got our building, and it's, the big roof repair is happening over there as we speak. It's starting up soon, so I think things are, you know, working out real well in that regard. Vice Chairman Maddox asked me to come before the board and outline some of the concerns I might have going into the 2022 election year, some of the concerns about Senate Bill 90, potential concerns about upcoming legislation. I will say that the 2020 election year, as it was for the county government in general, was extremely challenging for elections, but I think we were very successful. It's surprising some of the legislation that tried to get passed in the 2021 legislative cycle. But I will say that our Supervisors of Elections Association stood up strong once we saw what was coming down, and we, I think, managed to defeat the very worst of that. Some bad things still remain. There's some legal challenges out there. My office has done massive amounts of discovery. I've done depositions. I expect I'll be on the stand, surprisingly as a defendant, although frankly, I feel as much of a plaintiff half the time. But I, so I think the response is there. Some of our biggest challenges going into 2022, I think, as it really was in 2020 and continues to be this, this year, is the massive disinformation campaigns. That was anticipated, but the origins were not anticipated. We expected it to be coming more from our nation-state adversaries, but frankly, that it may have began that way, but frankly, it became very politicized. Elections became a political weapon and doubting that, and I think that's the biggest problem my office faces. And it manifests itself in some of the legislation that I think some of our legislators are feeling most compelled to pass or at least present to satisfy the base there. But I think we have been successful, like I say, in this past year to defeat the worst of that language. And we've got a good ear in the Secretary of State. We have a lot of input there. I'm the president-elect, and next year I'll be the president of our association. We've got a great relationship, and she really listens. So I think that she is actually helping us moderate some of the worst of that. Hopefully, nobody's listening that will take offense at that prospect, but she's a, I think, a really good resource there. So I think we're well-prepared, again, with the budgets we've had, and I think we're well positioned to make 2022 as big of a success in elections, not just here in Leon County, but for the state as it has been over the last couple of years. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but I don't, you know, you've got a long schedule today, as always, so that's my update.
Thank you so much, Supervisor Early. We heard you said that you had plenty of money, and you heard that sigh of relief that we gave collectively. We appreciate the leadership that you're giving.
Thank you very much.
We also note the, the dynamics with which you're facing. You currently the president of the Supervisors of Elections of the state of Florida, is that accurate?
I'm president-elect. I'll be president starting in June next year, and I'm the chair of the Cyber Security Committee and co-chair of the Legislative Committee. There's a lot of committees. Yes, I'm very active there, and we have, we have a lot of input there.
Right. And just maybe for a time such as this, you've been designated for that important role. Commissioners, are there comments that you, questions or queries that you have of Supervisor Commissioner Jackson.
I just wanted to issue commendations to you and your
Thank you.
...is remarkable the task that you take on, including voting and all of the accompanying, I guess, issues to go with that. And thank you so much for your service.
Commissioner Jackson, thank you very much.
Of the commissioners, Commissioner Maddox, you, you're gonna be serving on the, next year?
Don't know yet, but do want to take the opportunity to thank the Supervisors of Elections Office for all it's done. In the past elections, I know this upcoming election will be flawless, just like the other ones. Just don't let anything get in the way. And I trust the staff will do that. You're always professional. You're always accurate and astute in what you do. Congratulations on your future leadership of, of the Association for the State. And, and just, if there's anything we can do to help, you know we're here, whether it's help with the leaky roof or, or even, like Commissioner Proctor said, we've already got a lot of money, but if you need something in order for our elections to go smoothly in Leon County, you let us know. You let us through a pandemic, through a pretty flawless election, and we had to do some different things to get through that. If those types of challenges pop up again, don't hesitate to come over and ask.
Vice Chairman Maddox, thank you very much for those kind words. And, you know, when I, when I say the partnership and the availability of funds, you know, we, I think, are very good stewards. There were some third-party funds, and that was one of the things Senate Bill 90 came out and challenged, but frankly, we got $1.43 million from outside, and I think that offset a lot of the challenges we had, and I think that enabled us to give you back much of the money that was in our regular budget this year. So we try to be very wise stewards of, of the county taxpayers' money, absolutely.
Could, could I, might I ask if early voting changes, drop box changes, some of the more, those things which might stymie the free flow of the election, that if information is put on the street well ahead of time, that the citizens of our county would know how to make the adjustment in terms of what we're required to do in 2022 versus previous years? And how are you all planning to disseminate information based on what the legislature has done to restrict voting?
Good question, yes. And there's a lot of disinformation out there, so a lot of what we're planning to do is a lot more education, even within our association. We've recently released two letters, one letter to voters and one letter to elected officials and campaigns to try and tone down the disinformation rhetoric and to reassure voters that you can trust election results. That's the biggest problem we face. As far as the details of early voting and drop boxes and vote by mail and all of the logistics of elections around early voting, not, not really anything has changed. Drop boxes, there have been some restrictions, but for the most part, the, the biggest problems there that were being proposed, we defeated. So in Leon County, you won't see really any changes with drop boxes. We may have to mount some cameras. There's a rumor that legislation might involve staffing and cameras, security cameras, monitoring every drop box at early voting sites and at our main office. We already have those cameras at our main office. We already have staffed drop boxes always. So if we have to get cameras again, you know, we'll make that happen. We've already looking at some inexpensive ways to handle that. But for the voter, there should not be any, really any noticeable difference is our goal.
Very good. Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Early. We appreciate your coming in. Thank Commissioner Maddox for the sacrifice of time, his commitment to serving on the canvassing board. We appreciate you both.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, for this meeting's COVID-19 update, I'm going to hand it off to Claudia Blackburn, who will be joined by Dr. Elaine Bryant, who will also provide a presentation as requested by the board at your last meeting.
Very good. Ms. Blackburn, we welcome you here. We thank you. It's our understanding that we're going to see less and less of you, and, and not before Santa Claus comes, but we understand that next year something unique is going to happen.
Yes, yes. Thank you for that. I, I am planning on retiring. January 5th will be my last day, so. I didn't know if you meant that or just that COVID was going to go away and you would never see me again, so.
Jokes.
I will try to go quickly because I know that you have a packed agenda, and I think I'm bringing good news. So just wanted to talk about our new cases and positivity rate for the last week ending November the 4th. This is from the Department of Health website. We were at a positivity rate of 2.1%. Yay! And 132 cases, 43.5 per 100,000 cases, and that's a little bit lower than the state rate, which was 2.6% positivity and 50.4 cases per 100,000. Now, if you look at the CDC website, which I know Commissioner Jackson does regularly, they have us at 1.2% positivity for the last week, so that's even better. And we are now at moderate transmission, moderate community transmission. So it's been a long time since we've seen that, so that's, that's really good news. Okay, testing is still going on, though the numbers have dropped. We have testing still at 2965 Municipal Way from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, seven days a week. I believe they are going to close for Veterans Day, and they're probably going to be closing soon, so people may want to check before they come out there. Huntington Oaks, the Lake Jackson Library site will continue, and then FAMU, primary care providers, CVS and Walgreens are all testing. Our vaccination rate for the county is 61% of people that are eligible, that's 12-plus, that's not counting the, the 5 to 11 age group yet. That is where we are. It has not changed very much in the last. And I'm going to skip through that. There are, there's an additional dose of COVID mRNA vaccine recommended. I've talked about this before. This is for people who are moderately to severely immunocompromised. It is recommended that they get a third dose, and that is a full dose of either the Pfizer or the Moderna vaccine. And then this slide should have been updated, I apologize, because now it's, you can get a booster dose of Pfizer and Moderna or J&amp;J. You can mix and match booster doses, so if it's been six months since you completed your series for Pfizer or Moderna, it's probably time for your booster dose if you fall into any of these categories. And then if you got J&amp;J, it is recommended that you get a booster dose two months after your first dose because it just has not been as an effective vaccine as, as the others. The big news is that pediatric COVID-19 vaccines have now been recommended for anyone ages five and older, and they will receive an age-appropriate dose, and then they'll get another dose three weeks later. So it follows the same schedule as for adults. And I just wanted to let you know that we are, we're, we're doing vaccination clinics at 1515 Old Bain Bridge Road, our clinic, 4 to 7:00 PM on Tuesdays, so there's one going on right now, and 3 to 6 on Fridays, and then there, Leon County has a fabulous Vax Map that you can look to see where you can get a vaccination and also where you can get tested, and that's a great resource. The monoclonal antibody treatment for people that have COVID or that are high-risk and have been exposed and are considered a close contact, vaccinated or not, is still available, but the site at Governor's Square Mall is closing November 12th. That is the last day. But CDR Health on Capital Circle will still have the monoclonal antibody treatment. And then, of course, masks are still recommended for indoor public places if you are not fully vaccinated and you're two or older, and, and again, you know, avoid contact with people who are sick and maintain social distancing and, and hand washing. I did want to take a moment, it's not COVID, I hope this is okay, but I need to talk about influenza activity in Leon County. I know you've been reading the papers. Our influenza and influenza-like illness in Leon has increased considerably over the past weeks, and our percentage of emergency department visits for influenza-like illness for the last week was higher than it's been in the last five years. So last year, we essentially had no flu season, and we didn't really know what was going to happen this year, but it, it looks like it's here a little early, and I would really recommend that people get their annual flu vaccination. If you haven't done it yet, please don't wait. Please do it now. You can get it along with your COVID booster. Please get it. It's, it's very important. And to that end, we are having a drive-through flu clinic this Saturday from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM at 1515 Old Bain Bridge. You don't have to have an appointment, and if you want more information, it's 404-6300. So that's my report, and I am going to turn this over to Dr. Bryant to give her update.
Thank you, Ms. Blackburn. I'm wondering when they're going to get that flu shot down to a pill, like we've been long enough now. That ought to be a tablet or something, but yeah, get a shot, Nick.
Chairman Proctor and to all of the commissioners, extremely excited to be here with you today to provide an update. Let me take this off. From the task force that was originated really near the end of last year, under the leadership of Pastor Holmes, we actually created a statewide and a local COVID vaccine engagement, education, and we were hoping informed vaccinations throughout the community. I will say that the vision and the focus was on African-American, low-income people who lived in rural areas. We are in phase two. In phase one, our interest and, and really focus was on those who were seniors, those who lived in neighborhoods that continued to be challenged with food deserts, health deserts, opportunities not to get to CVS and to other places that provided the vaccine. So here we are in, in phase two, and I'm, I'm not really rushing, but in a way I am. I've been told y'all have a long agenda, and I know about long agendas, so I'm going to actually go ahead and try and bring up the county to actually talk the statistics. So let, let me just tell you a little bit about what, what we have done. In phase one, we targeted over 10,000 households in diverse geographic communities, and these were areas where there were unmet needs. And we were able to get into, to South City, into Bond, Griffin Heights, Frenchtown area, Bradfordville, Fort Braden during the first phase. And many have asked me the question, and I, I'm glad I'm able to address it now, well, how successful do you think you were? How many people actually came and got a shot? And I want you to know that the education that was received, starting in phase one, actually is resulting, little to our knowledge, in people who are getting vaccinated today. Because when you educate, when you engage, I may not come the weekend of my outreach, but it does not mean that I do not come at a later time. So we, we, we're excited that the rates are going down because that means when we started back in December, back in March, up to this date, and, and, let me interject here, that you know change is hard. Most people are very challenged when it comes to changing their opinions about things that have happened in the past. So when you think about African-American So when you think about African-American communities and the various things that have gone on in the past, there was a reluctance, what we call a hesitancy, to actually get the vaccination. Please know that still exists today, but we have been able to break some barriers by going door-to-door, knocking on doors, by having Zooms, by having outreach from trusted voices in trusted places. We actually did 25 outreach initiatives throughout the community in Phase One. And in Phase Two, which I'll shift to fairly quickly, we actually identified 10 places, groups, organizations, and I'll tell you a little bit about them in a minute, where they have had outreach to the targeted population. In Phase Two, we shifted a little bit from those who were seniors, and we are looking at in Phase Two, youth, millennials, Gen Xers, people who, believe it or not, have the same misconceptions that other people had about the vaccine. So it is incumbent upon us to actually share the facts. It is incumbent upon us as, and let me thank you all. I need to stop right now and tell you thank you for the support that has been provided by the Leon County Commission. In order to do what we've been able to do, it was because of you and the support and that really direction that was provided to us as to our outreach. I don't want to miss that chance to do that. So right now, we have 10 organizations that have agreed to do outreach, but it's through community organizations with youth and community organizations that are partnering with the universities. They have been on both campuses, targeting people who would either say, yes, I want to take the vaccine, but could you educate me? And those who say, I have taken it and I don't mind sharing the information. Both very critical. So our outreach to millennials and to Gen Xers, we have partnered with many of the organizations that received our grant, our mini-grant, and if you know anything, I'm sure that you've heard of Frenchtown Rising. And we partnered our millennial team with the team that received the mini-grant, and we had two pastors that actually got on stage and talked about the importance of getting a shot. And then when I saw them on stage, they looked like pastors because I know them, but they had a word for the youth, for the millennials, that encouraged them to actually go and get vaccinated. Most importantly, I think that these generations really connect with social media. It is that that's their telling, you know, whether I should get the vaccine or not. If somebody said on social media that make your arm fall off, and I'm sure you won't be surprised at the many things I've heard, that it's going to hinder females from being able to become impregnated, all kinds of myths, misinformation. We had to actually penetrate that wall of social media such that we could start sending the right message, such that we could educate through social media. And we've been able, really excited about what we've been able to do there. Some of our organizations, youth organizations that we've partnered with includes Pace for Girls, the Kingsman's Club, the Distinguished Young Gentlemen, the National Achievers Society, Born to Be a Man. We had 10 of those, and we got excited about some of the things that they are doing. Now, they have created, and I just want to, in my final comments, play a quick clip from a PSA that was developed that I think would be very telling. I do want to invite you to come out on this Saturday. We had a big event planned for last Saturday, and they convinced me to go with the weatherman, who said it was a 60% chance of rain. So I did that, and y'all know how beautiful that Saturday was. We're doing this Saturday, rain or shine. We're going to have an outreach called Got Vaxxed: Community Connection. And we're inviting the community out to share with us on this occasion. So let me go ahead now and play our Got Vaxed. I was told how to do this. Let's see.
I wanted to protect myself and my community.
I got vaccinated to protect myself and my family.
I got vaccinated to protect my friends, family, and members of my community.
If we're going to be completely real, my mother made me get vaccinated.
Since so many of my family and friends have been affected by the COVID-19 virus, I took it upon myself to get vaccinated to help our community.
My family and I have been impacted by COVID-19.
My experience with the virus happened in February 2021, when my great-grandmother went into the hospital for a minor infection and came out with the coronavirus.
We recently have lost a family member due to this evil virus.
COVID-19 affected one of my close friends, and about two weeks ago, her mother passed away.
Earlier this year, I had a close mentor pass of COVID-19 complications. She left behind friends, family, and people who truly cared about her.
A host friend of mine had to deal with COVID-19, and their family had drastically changed their entire lifestyle.
For everyone to get back to normal requires action from everyone, which is to get vaccinated.
Are you vaccinated?
Have you got vaxxed?
Have you got vaxxed?
You should get vaxxed because it is better to be vaccinated than to be ventilated.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. We appreciate that hearty presentation coming from the Coronavirus Vaccination, Community Education Engagement Task Force. I want to thank you, Ms. Blackburn, Ms. West, you're coming. Very great. All right. We now hear and receive presentation from Mr. Marcus West.
Thank you for having me this evening, and it feels good to see so many familiar faces with a lot of the work that we've done in your community. So thank you for allowing me to come and share a summary, a brief summary, of the work that we've done. I want to start by first giving you an overview of where we were and where we are now. So at the beginning of this pandemic, I think our first collaborative outreach event involving the task force and New Mount Zion and the Florida Department of Health took place in March. So looking at February 20, February the 28th, 2011, all the way until October the 31st, will let us see what we have done and what strides we have made in Leon County around COVID as far as vaccination and mitigation efforts. So the black vaccination rate increased from 7.8% to 36.5%. So that's a difference of 28.7%. When we look at whites, the vaccination rate increased from 16.1%, again, and this is February 28th, to 51.2% or about a 35% increase. And I didn't forget about you in District 2, Commissioner General. So the Hispanics, including all races, the vaccination rate increased from 8.5% to 53.3%. So we saw a 44.8% difference within that same timeframe. So let's look at some of the activities we've done and some of the dynamic, innovative approaches that we've taken to address COVID-19 within our community. So understanding the context that was laid before me, we do have some difficult-to-reach populations, and we have different demographics compared to the state of Florida. About 32% of our population in Leon County is African-American, and that's about double the state's rate. We also have 70,000 college students in Leon County. So when we look at vaccination rates, specifically those 20 to 29, we see that we have a higher population, so we have some work to do there, but we are engaging those populations, and these are some of the activities that we're doing to do so. So specifically to communities of color, those hard-to-reach populations, we're talking to those trusted community voices and community advocates, and we're doing this at the point of access. So we're going to the Time Saver, which is in Frenchtown. We're going to Frenchtown Rising, which was a great event where we've engaged over 350 participants. Frenchtown Heritage Festival Wellness Days and Community Health Fair. So what I want to highlight is, as you look at the participants, this is not just handing a flyer or a brochure to somebody. This is having that one-on-one facilitated conversation with individuals who, at this point, might have extreme mistrust versus hesitancy. So we're trying to not address vaccine hesitancy, but we're trying to promote vaccine confidence. Other places that we go, again, looking at diverse populations, we want to meet people where they are. So we're doing education and vaccination events at barber shops, hair salons. We've done a couple at Fade. We've done outreach at university barber shops. We've also gone to restaurants as well. And I definitely want to speak to Ms. Dee's Kitchen because she does a lot of work with us, but just using her as an example, going in, educating her and her staff about COVID-19, some of the resources we have in town. She is now able to do some of the work that we do, educating her patrons as they come in. If somebody comes in and they're not using or practicing the proper mitigation methods or if they're spreading information that's not necessarily factual, we've empowered certain stakeholders in the community to dispel some of the misinformation that we're hearing and provide factual information to these populations, again, that are hard to reach. So we are looking at, again, meeting people where they are. So we're going to the public housing sector. We're looking at Hickory Hills Apartment, Mission Hills, The Meadows, Oakwood, and then we're also going to hotels and motels as well. So these are a couple of hotels and the motels that we've continued, that we continue to do outreach on a reoccurring basis at. And understanding that, again, we're looking at a younger population when we're looking at the 20 to 29-year-olds and engaging them. So we are looking at different methods of reaching people, not just in the community, but also the virtual method. We have to be careful with that because there are barriers in certain communities to that, so we want to make sure we add, we offer both, virtual platforms, but then we're also in the community, talking to people and reaching people in person. So these are some of the virtual presentations that we've done, and again, these are forums where we allow people to ask us questions, and we dispel the myths, and we target those populations that we see low vaccination rates in, the college population, and again, those are communities of color. Ongoing efforts, so we are working with our partners, and I want to say thank you for the lateral support that we've received. We cannot do the work without you, our federally qualified healthcare centers, the task force, a lot of our local community partners, and others that are working with us to organize, to organize and reach people in places that are difficult to reach. We have a community engagement activity that we actually did on Sunday, where we partnered with the College of Madison. We had med students go out into the community to do door-to-door outreach around COVID vaccinations, and this is around Sable Palm. And this wasn't just dropping off a flyer. Again, we held sessions with them, we talked and motivational interviewing, and we went out in the community with them to gather qualitative data, to inform our process. What are we not doing well? What can we change? How can we reach you? Why are you still not vaccinated? So we're doing that, and we actually have a virtual town hall that we promoted in that event, and we're going to be talking again, asking those questions to find out, again, what is it that people are hung up on? What are some of the myths? And what are some of the concerns individuals have? These are our partners that we work with, and it's a lot of them. And I wanted to put that up there just to talk about how we have to take this approach. We cannot just take a traditional approach to outreach. We need to meet people where they are. We need to go to where people are congregating, where high-traffic areas are, and where people are able to have those one-on-one conversations. So when you see these lists, it's not only us going out there and facilitating the one-on-one dialogue, it's us talking to the staff and empowering them to, again, continue the message of, we're not done. So no different than wearing a seatbelt when you're in the car. If just because we see less fatalities as a result of wearing the seatbelt doesn't mean we should take it off and assume that things are not going to continue in the way that we've seen. So I thank you, and as we continue to move forward, thank you for your support as we continue to address the community and provide these resources.
Very good. We want to thank you, Mr. West. Certainly, we appreciate boots on the ground. We like the aggressive go to the community, meet them, knock on doors. That kind of assertive approach is very much appreciated. Commissioners, are there comments, queries of Mr. West? I don't have electronics, so if you'd like, pop your finger if I can. Commissioner Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to collect, Commissioner Blackburn, Dr. Bryant, and Ms. West, for all, and Mr. West, I'm sorry, for all the work that they have done during these trying times. Clearly, we know lies on the line, and they have not hesitated to go knock on doors, go into these areas, to try to not only educate our people, but also to vaccinate our people as well. And that's what it's all about, I believe, Commissioners, is collaboration, working together to get it done. And I agree with Mr. West's statement, is just because the numbers are going down, we don't stop. We don't rest on our laurels because we don't know when it might raise its ugly head again. So the work continues. You guys are doing a great job to achieve 51% vaccination in Leon County. It's no easy task, especially when we look at the neighborhoods where there was just great vaccine hesitancy. So you all have done a yoma's job. I certainly, you certainly have my support and hopefully the support of the county and the Commissioners as you continue to fight this battle. So thank you, thank you all for your report and for your hard work and for your concern about the health, safety, and welfare of all the citizens of Leon County. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Cummings, Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you all, Dr. Bryant, Mr. West, and Claudia. Maybe only one meeting left. Perhaps we'll see you in December. Thank you for your service, for all your time in Leon County, but definitely over the last couple of years. We couldn't have done this without you. I am very encouraged. I was thinking about this earlier, that for our reorg day, this is the first time that we have sat up here without masks in maybe 20 months, and that's, you know, the virtual meetings, and then this is the first time. So, Mr. West, I think you said it's good to see people, and I just, it hit me that I can actually see people's faces today. I also want to respect all of those who are still wearing masks, and I think we all need to be very respectful and keep an eye on the numbers going forward. I'm sure I see a lot of nods in the back, so. This was an exceptional weekend. I had a lot of young people around who were excited to get vaccinated. I'm sure you all did, too. That was really amazing to see that, and the numbers coming down is just extraordinary. So we are in a very good place. Dr. Bryant, I really, and Mr. West, I really appreciate all the partners and the outreach that you're doing. And Mr. West, I just, the one comment or question that I had was, you're collecting this data, and I don't think this is something you have to answer right now or anything like that, but I was just going to say, and the chairman mentioned, I guess we'll hear more in January at our retreat, but perhaps a task force or a committee or something looking at COVID issues. It strikes me that we have collected so much data in the last couple of years, and it is more real-time than a lot of data that we might see at different points. Our 32304 item later points to, you know, a lot of the housing assistance and other things, and we're getting a really interesting look at our community from the last two years. So I'm just hoping that that data, what is able to be shared, I know it's health data, but that we can bring all of this together at some point to really be prepared for anything that comes in the future. And I'm seeing some nods in the back, so that's sufficient for now. Mr. Chair, I'll just toss that out, and maybe we can dig into that in January. But we need to capture this, and I think it could be really informative on our policies going forward. So thank you all for what you're doing.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Jackson.
Yeah, I do want to thank Mr. West, Dr. Bryant, and Claudia, are you still here? Hey, there you are. It showed FAMU as being a testing site, but if I'm not mistaken, FAMU is doubling up as a testing and vaccination site. Is that correct? Just want to make sure that we get that out to folks. And yes, I was able to see the low CDC rate. I think there are some, sometimes folks are getting tested from other counties that come to Tallahassee or Leon County, and that may affect those rates being different. Is that what? Is that what, is that what happens there?
Those rates are for a different time period, so at least the positivity rates. That's the difference.
Okay. Irregardless, it's a great move in the right direction. Look forward to more meetings and more interactions mask-free. So thank you all three for bringing that. And also, I appreciate the report on our Hispanic population and their vaccinations at Fort Braden School in western Leon County. They have the highest Hispanic population in the entire school district at 32%. And reaching that through language barriers, communication barriers, and general hesitancy about engaging in public institutions has been extremely great work. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Blackburn, Dr. Bryant, Mr. West, I just want to thank everyone, thank all of you for your teams as well, for all the work that you've done. I mean, often we hear about a status report of an issue or a topic, and it scratches the surface of all the work that's been done. But I don't think anything was more true than this right here, because over the last 20 months, you all and your teams have worked incredibly hard to protect lives and maintain the health of people who live here. So I don't want to repeat what everyone else has said, other than just to say thank you for everything that you and your folks are doing. Greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very well. Seeing no other commissioners in queue to speak, again, we compliment each of you, Ms. Blackburn, Dr. Bryant, Mr. West. I'm sure that Vice Chairman of School Board was here a second ago. There is something that we're hearing, and I'm just pondering, Mr. West, something, Dr. Erwin Jackson wouldn't know how to frame it better, but is there something emerging as a new mental health category of isolation anxiety? We hear a lot about children suffering, I'm making up a word, isolation anxiety. Is there enough data that has emerged in our community that you can frame it and maybe speak just briefly, just a small second or two on it, if we've observed that? Vice Chairman Jones, I asked a question of Mr. West and Ms. Blackburn that I have been hearing, and I'm sure commissioners have seen, some emerging mental health category called youthful isolation anxiety. And the fact that the children of the schools have not been coming, there are various behaviors that have grown out of that isolation and so forth, and I'm glad you walked back in because I didn't invoke your name, because I'm sure you're hearing it at the school board. So, Mr. West, if you could tell us just something briefly about it, because it's not altogether clear.
During several of the forums that we've hosted in the community, we have been hearing about certain occurrences of mental health, behavioral health, and other instances of people needing help or soliciting resources or services. I can say definitively that I know that our young children are impacted by this. As we look at ACES and different things, we can see that COVID-19 has been a disparity magnifier, indeed. We recently obtained a position with the Florida Department of Health for a Behavioral and Mental Health Navigator, and in that position is actually working on resource advocacy around these issues and some of the populations. But again, I think we do need to have a focused conversation around the data and develop some interventions specific to the younger population, making sure that they are not left out of the comprehensive planning efforts in Leon County.
Okay. We thank you, and I would just say to the Vice Chairman of School Board, who next week becomes, we hope, Chairperson of the School Board, a continuing focus on mental health, and if in fact isolation dynamics emerges new issues, that it would come under the umbrella of what we're looking at for mental health wellness for our young people coping with where we are right now. So count us in. We want to know, and we know that you're hearing a lot more calls than we are. Thank you very much. Beautiful presentation. Our commission is satisfied with what we've heard today, and we move gently forward. Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, you have one consent item.
Mr. Minor, did I read you? Did you want to say something?
Sure.
Thank you very much. I think the county administrator is going to address the point, I don't want to interrupt what the county administrator had, but I was going to have a motion to pull a consent agenda item.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to pool number 18 from the consent agenda.
Before we do that, to be in right order, if I'm not mistaken, I'll make a motion that we waive the rules. Here we have a motion to waive the rules.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Minor. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of waiving the rules? Please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Rules are being waived, and Commissioner Minor, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Vice Chairman Maddox, thank you very much, appreciate that. And I do apologize for pulling this agenda item within the 24-hour time restriction under the rules. But I had an email a few hours ago from a constituent that has quite a bit of banking experience. He's a banking executive for about 50 years of experience and retired now. And he had brought up some historical context about the PACE program under Renovate America. In the agenda item, Renovate America was basically the financial entity that managed the PACE program for a lot of programs around the country. It went bankrupt. But he has brought to my attention some cases where he believes that some of the Renovate America financing arrangements with some of the homeowners were actually targeted toward disadvantaged populations, with the idea of like having unfavorable financial conditions for those families. And basically expressed that concern going forward. I have no idea or evidence to show that the Florida PACE Funding Agency, which is the entity that we would be gravitating toward, would have any issues like that. But after contacting the county administrator about it, there is something in the resolution that will be voting on that has an ability to pay provision when you conduct financial evaluations for homeowners that are looking at entering the PACE program. In other words, with Renovate America, there's really no ability to pay criterion. And so what happened is that you had a lot of families that were apparently engaging in these loans that would then go into default for their home and foreclose on their home because of those unfavorable financial situations. With this agenda item, the ability to pay is in the resolution, so that agreement we have with the Florida PACE Funding Agency will have that provision in there. So I'm willing to move forward on the agenda item. However, I would like to add to the staff recommendation for option one, to have the, an assessment, a status report of this new entity that we're joining in about a year's time, to give us a status report of how those homeowners are benefiting from these financial transactions that they have, doing the home improvements, and then having those assessed on their tax bill. You know, I'd like to see in about a year's time how that's going with this new entity that we're partnering with. So that would be my motion for this agenda item. Option one, with a status report in about a year's time on the status of the new partner.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Minor and a second by Commissioner Dozier for agenda one, agenda item, I'm sorry, recommendation one. And I want to ask, in addition, that there is an addendum or any valutative instrument to tell us how our citizens are faring, and are they drowning? Are they being victims of loan sharking? Exactly what is occurring, and how safe are they in their financial well-being? I think that's an excellent point. We're not trying to cast lambs to the wolves, and we should monitor what is occurring.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would accept that as a friendly amendment. I think it's a good program. It gives the ability for people to have home improvements to their homes, but there is that element that we need to be concerned about. So I would second, I would approve that friendly amendment.
Very good. Are there other comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion that's been made on item 18, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign, it passes unanimously. We're back now to adopting our consent agenda. Is there a motion? Motion by Vice Chairman, seconded by Commissioner Welch, that we adopt the consent agenda. Hearing all the comments, discussions, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign, it passes unanimously. We now transition, Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, we have a few speaker cards on citizens to be heard on non-agended items. The first speaker is Whitfield Leland III.
Mr. Leland? Mr. Leland here? Come on down, Mr. Leland.
Good afternoon. Whitfield Leland, Executive Director of the Community Roundtable, 527 West Boulevard Street. 10 days ago, the Community Roundtable sent out an email, CC each and every one of you on the Diet Senate concerning the jailhouse. After getting some phone calls from family members and actually talking to somebody that went in jail and did a two-day stint, the jail is in dire need of repairs. After doing research, to no fault of Walter McNeil, he is the only sheriff that has asked for the larger amount of money of $128,000 for repairs during this tender. That's highly respected. At the same time, though, I do think with what we're hearing and what's coming out and people actually being able to say, I seen it, and not versus what I heard, I think it brings some concern on our behalf and my behalf as a community leader that, first of all, while Sheriff McNeil hasn't responded, and neither one of you all have responded neither, because y'all are CC in it, and I do understand that he's a constitution officer, and I do understand that he requests his budget from you guys. And if he don't request it, I understand that he don't get it. So what I'm asking you all, standing before you all, to maybe direct staff into looking into funding or repairing some of the major issues over at the jailhouse. Thank you, have a nice day.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wieland. Our next speaker.
Next speaker is Dr. Erwin Jackson.
Dr. Jackson, you declined being a member of my family, but not stand with me today, but come on and give us your address and name and all of that.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Jackson, we thank you if you give us your name and address and we recognize you for.
Yes, Erwin Jackson, 1341 Jackson Bluff. Commissioners, I've been involved with corruption in Leon County for several years, almost a decade now. I've learned more about it than I ever anticipated. Let me share something you may not know. Scott Maddox is a lobbyist, is a lobbyist, and he's registered to be a lobbyist in Leon County. So what that means is Scott Maddox can serve five years for bribery, extortion, and other acts of financial fraud. He can return to Tallahassee, pay a $25 reactivation fee, and then continue to serve himself out of the public trough in his role as a county lobbyist. I think that's a problem. There has to be some standards on who you're going to allow to be a lobbyist to come before you. Equally astounding, Gary Jordan, an admitted member of the Scott Maddox family, is an active registered lobbyist in good standing today. During the J.T. Burnett trial, the county has taken no action to terminate Jordan's registration, even though Jordan admitted under oath during a trial that he worked with Scott Maddox to extort money from a local business, funneled the money through Jordan's lobbying firm, the Zachary Group, transferred the money immediately to Scott's lobbying firm, Governance, where Scott's girlfriend and a city lobbyist as well, immediately transferred the illegal money to now convict Scott Maddox. So 25 bucks, Scott Maddox can be up here talking, and Gary Jordan is currently available to come up here, regardless of what he's admitted to under oath. I have approximately 10 items, and I gave you a printout of the 10 items, and I'm just going to summarize them real briefly in 40 seconds. I appreciate the three-minute limit. We need to expand the definition of lobbyists. We should not allow lobbyists and campaign managers to get county contracts. We need to require a criminal background check on campaign managers and lobbyists, and if you find they've been involved in financial crime, financial fraud, then they should not be allowed to be registered here. The Leon County vendors who engage in honest services fraud and other financial fraud should be banned from getting contracts. I'd be disappointed if Scott Maddox came in here and got a contract, or J.T. Burnett. We need no-bid contracts to be terminated unless it's an emergency. CRA and blueprint money should be subject to the same ethical and auditing procedures as all other county projects, and finally, the fees and fines that are given to these violators is an embarrassment. A company that can go ahead and give Scott $10,000 to $20,000 a month, and you're charging his, you're charging a $25 fee to be a registered lobbyist, lots of work we need to do, and thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Jackson. We received this document from you. I'll mention it under my time further. Mr. Administrator.
Final speaker, Melissa Villar.
Hello there. Good afternoon.
Ms. Art, just pull it down.
There we go.
Good, good.
Hi there. I would like to speak to, one, to the workshop for, to item number four.
Could you state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Melissa Villar with Normal Tallahassee, and that's the National Organization for the Reform of Marijuana Laws. So I do appreciate the workshop and coming, scheduled for March, but I would like to respectfully ask that expungements and pre-employment and random drug screening be added to the workshop, since all the necessary players will be involved, the board, the state attorney, the sheriffs. And also because the congressional appropriations bills, both in the House and the Senate, Congressman Crist, at our behest, has entered the language to end pre-employment and random drug screening. The latest studies do prove that the federal drug testing policies are outdated, and so they are being addressed in the appropriations bills in the language that's being heard on the floors currently. So I respectfully ask that, again, expungements and pre-employment screening be added to the workshop in March. And just as a reminder that this county has been looking at civil citations and having civil citations for cannabis, but I want to remind the board that substance abuse providers, it is a cottage industry, and they sometimes do more harm than good because of the random drug screening, because cannabis is a fat soluble, and unlike other substances which are water soluble and leave your system within one to two days, that causes individuals to use harsher substances like molly, like cocaine, like meth, like heroin, like spice, where hemp and marijuana actually stay in your system for up to 30 days. So I just wanted to add that to the discussion as we're going forward with civil citations and to discourage any. and to discourage any type of substance abuse providers, because throughout the time, I have worked diligently to ensure that our consumers have had a voice, because if you look back on the commission meetings, it was only substance abuse providers that were coming forward and presenting the proposal for civil citations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Art. Ms. Vice Chairman, that was our last speaker.
Yes, it is.
Ms. Vice Chairman, as our resident parliamentarian, can you tell us, how could we adopt, there were two or three things that Ms. Art said, but she's not given us a written piece of paper, and my memory is...
Yeah, I'll take a whack at it, but our county attorney's county parliamentarian, but I would imagine that just like with everything else, we would have to waive the rule in order to speak correct, Madam County Attorney.
She made recommendations, I thought, two or three of those just moved the needle for me, but I don't have it on a sheet of paper to know. But should we receive a letter from Ms. Art about some of the recommendations for all the pending workshop? How would we do that? I mean, the points are not like nebulous, I mean, they were decent. I thought they met the threshold of what we should look at, at least two of them.
Mr. Chair, yeah, the, under the agenda, there's no commission discussion for citizens to be heard on agenda items at this point in the meeting, but if one of the commissioners wanted to bring the summer commission time later, the board could certainly give direction to expand the scope of the workshop at that time.
Very good. Ms. Vice Chairman, if you'd please note that, that we lift that up later. Okay, thank you. Ms. County Administrator.
Chairman, Commissioners, that brings us to the general business portion of the agenda, item number 22, addressing poverty and inequities in 32304. Commissioners, this item provides a comprehensive report on programs, services, initiatives adopted and implemented by the county and other community partners to address poverty and inequities in communities and neighborhoods within the 32304 zip code. Additionally, as requested by the board at your retreat in January, the item presents plans that have been developed by the city and residents of the neighborhoods in 32304 to address poverty and inequities. It provides recommendations to better coordinate, align, and enhance existing county programs and services with these plans. Commissioners, I'll provide a brief overview of the item, and Shinkton Lammy is prepared to provide a more detailed presentation if the board would like. But Commissioners, as you know, poverty and inequity exist throughout our community. However, in 2018, the Florida Chamber of Commerce report found that the 32304 zip code has more residents living in poverty compared to any other zip code in the state, but it's important to remember that zip codes are rarely utilized by state and federal agencies as a barometer for poverty since they do not accurately reflect the characteristics of neighborhoods within a given zip code. Instead, census tracts are the most appropriate approach for compiling and analyzing socioeconomic data on communities and neighborhoods to identify poverty, and the census tracts in 32304 demonstrate overwhelmingly that generational poverty and inequities are concentrated in the Frenchtown and Griffin Heights neighborhoods, where poverty rates for families exceed 40%. Therefore, while we continue to provide services that address poverty throughout the community, the item focuses on Frenchtown and Griffin Heights neighborhoods within 32304. While these neighborhoods are entirely located within the city and have access to significant city resources, including recurring federal and state grants for housing and community development, the county has also invested in programs and services targeted to not only neighborhoods like Frenchtown and Griffin Heights, but to all areas of the county. This investment includes more than $6 million in recurring funds in human services and healthcare and economic development, and of course, over $62 million in non-recurring funding to provide for food and rent utilities, microloans, businesses, and nonprofit assistance for those most in needs, most in need throughout the pandemic. Building on the communities, building on the county's efforts to tackle poverty and inequity, this item also provides recommendations to better align our resources with our neighborhoods, with the city's Neighborhood First plans. The Neighborhood First plans reflect priorities of the neighborhoods that were adopted following an extended, up to 24-month period of community engagement with the residents of those communities and stakeholders. As a result, Commissioners, again, this item recommends that the county cooperate with the city in implementing these plans rather than developing new plans to address poverty and inequities in the 32304 zip code. In conclusion, Commissioners, we're recommending options one through four, and again, Shinkton is prepared to provide a brief presentation to you, Commissioners, or will be happy to answer any questions that you may have. You'll note that I don't usually go this long on an overview, Commissioners, but suffice to say, as this board knows, this has been a very high priority of the board, and certainly the item before you reflects that. And again, Shinkton's more than prepared and able to provide a more in-depth presentation for you, and we're happy to answer any questions. I just want to give a big shout out to his team, Shinkton and Abbey, on this item. It certainly reflects a pretty exhaustive effort on their part and so many other community partners. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll hand it over to you.
Compelling. Shinkton, we thank you. Commissioner Akayami, he knows how much I appreciate agenda items that take a deep, thorough dive, and you all have just waxed eloquent. I really wanted this meeting to just cancel the rest of agenda items, this is almost a 200-page report, this item, it's thorough, and I have comments, having given some initial start-up to the 32304 summit, and this is emotionally wound up and it's grinding. So I wanted to defer to Commissioners who are in queue, Commissioner Maddox, followed by Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I think it is fitting that you started our comments. A few years ago, you led the charge in 32304 workshops, and so I appreciate your leadership on that, to see it come full circle to where we are here today. I think the only way we can get moving, the ball moving, when it comes to an issue so big is by partnership, so it's good to see that staff from the city and county have come together to propose us doing such. The numbers of investment that we've made in the areas of 32304 are substantial, but the need in the area is also substantial. So I would expect that as we go along adopting that, we pay attention to our weakest links when our, our weakest areas when I, in our community that need the most help, that we will continue to invest in those areas, the amounts that we've invested in the past, until we're able to create a situation where 32304 is not as in progress as it has been in the past. And so with that, again, I thank Commissioner Proctor, I thank you for your leadership. Chairman Proctor, thank you for your leadership. County Administrator, city staff, county staff, for their attention to this and the idea of partnership as we move forward with this Neighborhood First program, Promise Zone funding, and CHSP, and I'll make a motion for items, for options one through four, staff has recommended. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we have that motion.
One more thing, Mr. Administrator, as we go down this path, is there any contemplation of a status report coming back to us to let us know how this Neighborhood First program is doing in the near future, or would that need to be part of the motion, time served?
Mr. Chairman, and yes, Commissioner Maddox, as we included in the item, we intended to bring this to you at least annually, or as need be if there were major developments that required any action from the board.
I'll tell you what, just because we're just starting the first year, let's do six months. Status report in six months, then we'll go a year, and then pending after that first year, we'll look at if we need to bring it back every six months, or if we can just relax back to a year, that would be a part of my motion as well, Mr. Chair.
Very good. You've heard the motion, a good motion, it's been seconded by Commissioner Minor, and we have next Commissioner Welch, Minor, and Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just have a quick question, Shinkton, maybe you can answer it for me, and I apologize if I missed it, but I think it's great that we're partnering with the city to address these issues. Is there any partnership with the school district? Obviously, you know, the schools facilitate a lot of, fill a lot of needs in these communities that are suffering from poverty, and is there any programming that we are partnering with the school district, or is there any, the school district at the table to help in any way that they can?
Commissioner, I know as part of the things that the board has passed through the central libraries, that is something that they're looking to do is work with the schools as part of the program for our libraries. We mentioned an item about the issue about the grades and literacy rates at the schools in these neighborhoods, and that's one approach that we, I think, is being looked at and is being taken at our, at our libraries to work with the school board.
Sure.
Thank you, Shinkton, and I just think, you know, obviously, our schools have a role to fill there. If we're going to, you know, do a broader community partnership to address these, you know, very substantial issues in 32304, I think it's, it's be smart to work with our school districts, and Mr. Vice Chair Jones, you know, obviously, you're going to be interested in this conversation, so anything we can do to get our school districts, or get our schools engaged to help solve a problem, I think is a good thing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Welch, and I just put him on the spot, Mr. Vice Chair. Jones, would you be willing to maybe sit down with the chair and the mayor and to think and consider how our combined entities can look at this fabulous report that's been ongoing for a couple minutes now? This is a major document. I think Commissioners, you all look at your reports on computer, but I actually get paper, and it's extensive, and I want, and I get the paper because I request it, and it works better for me. But I would like to see mayor chair and our school board chairman, because this poverty, cyclical poverty, is tied to education. There's a big footprint where educational deficits, efficiencies, undergird what is happening cyclically, and the call for perhaps vocational, just, and I think that we can merge, matrix our organizations to take this data and just hone in a little tighter on our next steps. If you're open, I am open, I think our commission is open. This is stunning, Shinkton, what you've brought, your group has brought, Mr. West has been the data kingpin. Mr. West, wave your hands in there, just wave it like you just don't care. Yeah, he has just been like phenomenal, and those first reports on 32304, I got to give honor where honor is due. Mr. Marcus West was the conductor driving the train, those numbers, crunching those numbers, giving us the mathematical eye to understand the sociological complex issues. Thank you so much. We'll get together, Mr. Jones. Mr. Minor, Ms. Dozier, Commissioner Cummings, Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, appreciate it. This is, as you said, Mr. Chairman, this is a very important, very comprehensive agenda item, and I mentioned about teamwork earlier, you did too, sir, as well. This reflects a lot of tremendous teamwork within this community, the county, working with the city, working with the neighborhoods, working with the schools to address a longstanding problem that we've had with 32304. So kudos to everyone that's been involved with it, Shinkton and your team, Mr. County Administrator, tremendous work. Mr. Chairman, I attended a large number of your 32304 summits a couple years ago before the pandemic. You had the great, that's another group of people that were all there together, you know, nonprofit service providers that were there, Whole Child Leon and Echo and et cetera, just a lot of great people that were there talking about the issues in this particular zip code. Not every community around the state or around the country has that type of, that partnership, where people are really working together to achieve things, and this agenda item holds a lot of promise. So I just wanted to thank everyone that had anything to do with it, Shinkton, your team, the city, Neighborhood First program, team members, really tremendous effort, looking forward to where this leads us after this agenda item will pass. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I could say, again, I said this earlier, ditto to a lot of the comments, we're overlapping a lot here. There is a tremendous amount of good information in this item, and I described it to someone yesterday as a status report, I mean, that's what it felt like, really digging in, not just to ongoing issues, the 32304 report that informed us so much years ago, but also, I really appreciate the breakdown of the CARES funding and American Rescue by these different neighborhoods. So thank you for digging into that level of detail, I think the partnerships are critical. So I just had a couple of thoughts, one, Commissioner, or I should say, Mr. Vice Chair now, I have the same thought about more frequent updates. This is something that citizens have asked me about, I'm sure they've asked you all, and brought up the Neighborhood First program, brought up some of these issues over the years. I wonder if even coming back around March or so, when we're looking at our discretionary funding levels, we're getting into the budget cycle, I will leave it as in the motion unless you'd like to change that, but I would just say, Mr. County Administrator, if there is a need to bring it forward or discuss this earlier in the year, before six months, I think that would be helpful for us, and I would like to know what's happening even on the city side, because again, citizens are going to be asking all of us, and they should demand, and they are, a partnership, and that's what we all want to have. This has come up before, I think designated an area like 32304 really helps galvanize our community, I mean, that was a significant report from the Florida Chamber of Commerce, but as always, we see an agenda item, and County Administrator and staff's got to do a little dance to separate, say, the college students from the census tracts, he said a moment ago, Mr. County Administrator. And Promise Zone is a legacy of the Obama administration, it was a good program, but it's two administrations ago. I only mention this because as we develop this partnership, I wonder if there's a better way to refine what we're talking about, because it's more than 32304, there's a few other neighborhoods that we're focused on, and we really need to make sure our community understands where our target areas are, where the need is, and all of our partners, we're talking about the same thing. So again, I don't think any change needs to happen now, but as we develop this partnership, I hope we get a little more clarity so we can really talk about this and how important it is for all parts of our community. The last thing, and I was making a note here, Commissioner Jackson, I thought of you, that homework's important, you always tell us that, Mr. Principal, and homework's informed by the data and everything else. So, Mr. Chair, I'm glad you gave Mr. West another shout out on the data, I know Shinkton has a tremendous amount, so this is kind of piggybacking on our COVID update. I think we've got a lot of data from CHSP in that process. I would really like to see something, and, Mr. Vice Chair, I don't know if this could be included in your motion, or if we could just take it up even at the retreat, how do we work with all this new data? And how do we really understand where we are and make quicker decisions? A lot of the statistics we get are a year or two old, we wait for reports, and they're a year or two old. Right now, we've got some real-time numbers, and I really think that that could help inform us, and again, a few of you have mentioned this, but, Mr. Vice Chair, you mentioned continuing investment in these areas. I think we've got to know where we are, what's working, what's not, in order to know what to do. So I will save that unless anyone else wants to jump into it sooner than that, I'll save it for the retreat, but I think, I think we should take this opportunity and really do as much as we can with the information we've got, because that'll help us be more targeted and the bottom line, help more people going forward, so, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great comments, thank you, Commissioner Dozier, and I take, the takeaway there is that we do all, County Administrator, to expedite the review, to sit down with the mayor, with the chairman of the school board before the year ends, and how we can create a symmetrical, three entities looking at this, but we need symmetry of interest elbow to elbow, and how we can make, because we're lock and loaded right now, I mean, the data arms us to step in a number of directions, I mean, we're fully loaded. I mean, we're fully loaded. And that being done, your great staff. This is a model, this is a model, agenda item of how a government looks at the sociological complexities in a community. And it's rare. And the historicity, you know, Florida M University's Black Archive should be involved just from the historical value of what's locked in here. The Riley House or, there's a lot that, and it's rare that, I read an item and my whole heart vibrates. From, I grew up in 32304. I grew up on Dover Street. So my family, my mama, my grandmama, we all from Dover Street. Kinfolk all over that area. My grandfather, grew up in Philadelphia, Premier Baptist Church. Did an interview there yesterday. This is emotional. This is real. Rachel grew up in 32304, right up from the Dade Street Community Center. This is not theory to us. This is real. This is our hearts and these people's faces that we know. So I thank the commission for your hearts being in the place that you've been dispositioned. And I think that this work can go further. All right, getting a little choked up here. Commissioner Miner, have we recognized you? Did I do so? Okay, Commissioner Cummings and then Commissioner Maddox. Ms. Jackson, you want to weigh in? Commissioner Jackson, where are you going to weigh in?
I wasn't.
Okay, okay. Cummings, Maddox, and Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I don't want to be redundant. I certainly support what my fellow commissioners have addressed and the sentiment about this particular item. And certainly you, Mr. Chair, having grown up in the 32304 zip code. I certainly embrace the county supporting Fresh Town, the Greater Bond area, and the Griffin Heights community, those specific areas that have been designated as low poverty areas with our families and with our children. I just want to commend staff with the holistic approach they've taken to this report. It was a long report, but very informative. And it addressed, I believe, Mr. Chair, what you're concerned about certain areas and children that are having mental issues because of the pandemic and because of the loss of family members due to the pandemic. Depression, so we have some mental health concerns as well as children that are not school ready. We have families that are impoverished. And I believe what this report does and recommends is that we are taking a holistic approach to addressing all of those issues. I appreciate the fact that staff went into the communities, talked to residents, held so many meetings and forums to determine what the needs were and to bring this report with the recommendation that the county coordinate, collaborate, cooperate with what the city is implementing and pretty much already has in place. So I certainly support the initiative. I just have one question. I know we, the report recommends strengthening the funding to the CHSP process and also recommends looking at some more outcome measurements in contracting with various service providers to provide the services that we feel are lacking in these particular areas. But my question is, I want us to move the needle in these three specific areas. And I'm concerned about how we determine whether or not that needle is moving. We engage these services, we engage people in the communities to elevate their socioeconomic status. But how do we determine that we are effectively moving the needle this year, next year, three years from now? And I wasn't really sure if I saw that in the report. So that's my question, Mr. Shinkton.
Well, Commissioner, before Shinkton steps up, you know, earlier today, I talked about the BBB Build Back America. And this issue that's before this community, is 32304 recoverable? Or is it hopelessly has passed a threshold of being recovered, made vibrant? That money, the next piece of money that Congress may contemplate. One of the reasons that we need a special task force that is aggressive and on it is because we have the data now. If this becomes with trillions of dollars in America, this has to be one of project, one of Florida's leading projects to be funded for, we have the velocity of data that warrants. And we are prepared to put in front of the nation and we want to receive special funding for this right here, the other documents that we have composed. So in terms of what we do next, I mean, he knows all the answers. But I wanted to interject that trillions of dollars, this kind of information, we are set to be funded. This is a leading project to be funded. We want to make sure that our special task force is on point and is going to secure that money with the kind of stuff that we got right here. Shinkton, go ahead and answer the real question for me.
Yes, filibustering.
No problem, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Commissioner Cummings, actually, at your next meeting, we'll be bringing back CHSP outcome measures, including those for the Promise Zone. We've been working based on directionals given by the board since this summer, actually, even before that, to look at developing outcome measures that really look at how we can work with our agencies that we currently fund in these programs to see if we can determine how we're moving the needle. How, and be able to actually see how effective those programs are in addressing the needs in the community. So those measures, there's been preliminary outcome measures that's been presented to us by FSU. We actually had a meeting last week with the agencies to go over those. And then, so we're in a well-positioned to have those ready come your December meeting for your review.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioners, if it seems like we're going long, it's just that the chairman has no sense of rhythm yet. And forgive me, bear with me, that everything is going in slow motion and very, very long. Once I gather a sense of rhythm, I'll be able to know when we come to the huddle, get back out before the 32nd clock runs out. All right, Commissioner Maddox, Chairman, Vice Chairman Maddox, Commissioner Jackson, then Dozier.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to yield to Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just quickly want to beat the drum for some of the, you know, we sometimes operate in silos and we have no idea what each entity or local governance is responsible for. I will beat the drum with Leon County Schools that offers, although there's only one school that's wholly located in 32304, which is Godby High School. There are eight feeder schools that have children that come from those zip code as well as 32310. Commissioner Proctor, you hit the nail on the head when you said that education is the key to escaping poverty. When you have in 32304 and 32310, nearly one out of every two students in third grade are not reading at grade level. In kindergarten classrooms in 32310 and 32304, less than 30% of kindergarten students are demonstrating grade level readiness to begin school. Those are, there's just a couple of facts. I too grew up in 32304 until they added a zip code and turned us into 32310. It's really difficult for an 11-year-old kid to all of a sudden learn a new zip code. But
You had to remember it though, didn't you?
But I can commiserate with, we, at our local school there, K-8 school, we serve over 200 families. As far as CHSP and its involvement through Leon County Schools. At those eight schools I mentioned, each weekend, every student in each of those schools has the opportunity to take home what's called a backpack meal program that's provided by Second Harvest. So kudos to Second Harvest for delivering those things. I know Commissioner Miner was very instrumental in the beginnings of that process, and I want to thank him. Although someone has inherited that word for him, it was his brainchild and I appreciate that. But we can't say enough about increasing literacy and encouraging families to become involved in the literacy process of their children. But when you are facing decisions about priorities, about whether to keep the lights on or whether to get some sleep so that you can't help your child with homework because you have a double shift to perform the next day, sometimes school appears further down the hierarchy of needs. And it's a shame that our children show up at school and they don't have their homework done and teachers lovingly work with what they have. And I think Marcus brought up, we have to meet these folks where they're at, educate them as much as possible to open up those resources. And I'm not talking about just serving food. I'm talking about engaging families in the importance of literacy in their young children. At our Title I schools across Leon County, less than 30% have ever been enrolled in a pre-K program prior to attending kindergarten. So when you read the voluntary or the Florida mandatory pre-K, it's not exactly what it's advertised to be. I think it's important to bring these up because it takes a village to raise a child. And in many instances, these are parents and families, grandparents, aunts, uncles, distant relatives that are taking care of children that they never had an intention on taking care of. We have to engage those families where they are and provide them the resources that they need. I don't know how that looks, but I have spent 29 years of my life trying to preach that message on the west side of Leon County. Thank you.
Thank you, heartfelt, from a school principal and a county commissioner, Commissioner Jumbo Jackson. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Vice Chair, will you?
I'll wait.
Thank you. This is a great discussion. And yes, Principal Comish, Jackson. I really appreciate you bringing in the perspective from the schools, kind of the ground up. I mean, I, it's not on the tip of my tongue how many feeder schools are going into Godby, for example. So thank you for those reminders because it helps fill this out. That's why I kind of joked earlier that the homework, the information we get helps inform policy. Now, we are exceptionally lucky in this community. We have a phenomenal human service agency network. Works part, you know, partners with us all the time, community organizations and businesses stepping up to really do a lot of this good. We've got a strong donor base. A piece of the, and fantastic staff. I should not leave that out. For the seven of us and our colleagues at the city, we get information from all these sources at different points. And we get great recommendations from our staff. But I want to lean in a little bit more to this because Chairman just said about the BBB, the Build Back Better infrastructure or perhaps the next bill that hopefully will pass for more of the human infrastructure, that deals with pre-K, that deals with a lot of these other issues. That we've got the data and we're ready and we'll qualify for that money. Having the data is one thing. Knowing what that data means and collaborating to submit that application and knowing where the money is, that's a whole different thing. And we've done a good job in our silos, Commissioner Jackson, to apply for some of those dollars. But what we're seeing from this administration is a demand for collaboration. We just went through this, a huge team across nine counties. Regional Planning Council submitted a grant under American Rescue Plan. I think it's over 70 million. I mean, it deals with economics. We had a lot of folks in this area working on it. But the collaboration, getting to understand what that data means so you can put it on paper, that is something different. So yeah, Mr. Chair, we've got the data, but we need to push this forward to make sure that we understand what it means and we're hearing from all of these different voices. We can't work in our silo next year. So I'm glad about the task force, other things. And CHSP and Shinkton, I think you probably, Mr. County Administrator, knew I was going to do this. This data, I am thrilled to hear that we're going to see this at the December 14th meeting. This has been a long time coming. We were still doing paper applications for CHSP maybe six, seven years ago. So it's been a little while on that. But we just had stacks of binders. We could never capture that data. So I just wanted to mention that last thing to see where we've gone just in the last, I mean, less than a decade here to giving money and supporting these organizations, but not really knowing or having any way to track that. So now we're going to have an agenda item that's looking at all these pieces. We're in a perfect position to push the envelope a little bit more and this is the time. Thank you.
Great. All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Couple of things to add to the motion if it'd be okay with the board. Mr. Administrator, I do think Commissioner Dozier, you had an excellent point. You talked about us trying to balance our time, our update, our status report with us looking at the budget. So I'm going to change that six months to three months. That way, it'll be in March, I mean, February, right before we look at budget in March. So I'll amend my motion to be three months, Mr. Administrator, instead of six months on the status report. The other thing I want to add to the motion is, there's so much talk about schools. And I do think education is going to be a huge part in moving the ball forward. And I want to ask that we add to the motion that Shinkton, Lamy present to the school board the things that, the findings that have been presented to us to get their input as well. Last but not least, going back to my days with the foundation of Leon County School, vocation, vocational education is huge. And I think a lot of our kids are missing the opportunity because we grew up in an age where we were preached. It was preached over and over again that we needed a four-year degree to be successful. Leon Works has taken us strides and leaps forward on trying to promote those kind of vocational things. You guys might remember, it was the day that Commissioner Lamy fell in love with a plumber. And next thing you know, we have Leon Works, right? I'd like for us to take it a step further in our staff working with the school board staff or Leon County School staff to see how we can maybe do a little more in promoting CTE and vocational education within Leon County, especially in those 32304 areas and those most impoverished areas. Do you know how much a welder is making these days? Do you know how much a plumber is making these days? And the two-year program that you have to go through to get to that kind of paycheck? I'm sure our kids, if they knew about it, if we started to promote it more, would be excited. Some kids are already doing it, but I think if we put an emphasis on it again, with that, one, adding the addition of the information being given to the school board from Shinkton Lamy in a workshop format, if that'd be carried over to them. And two, us figuring out how we can partner, hopefully the city will drop on as well, with the school board and Leon County School staff to promote more CTE and vocational education and career. I would like to add that to my motion if the second would be okay with that. Thank you.
I just want to say that in addition, one of the things when we discussed and met with President, former President Thrasher, he indicated that, and of course, he hosted the final summit over at Turnbull. But he said that I have to be involved with 32304 because my students live there. Florida State is entwined, intertwined with the 32304. I've not had a chance to brief President McCullough. I've talked with him. But to specifically note and bring him up to speed, the proximity of note and bring him up to speed, the proximity of his school to 32304. But we were certainly given a boost from President Thrasher's strong support and interest and understanding of the difference between Basin Street and Stadium Drive, and the distinctions of African-American men who lived on Stadium Drive and African-American men who lived on Basin Street, which is the same street, but you're in a different world on Stadium Drive. Hearing all the comments, we want to bring this in for a landing. Commissioners, this has been a great discussion. It's taken a lot of time, a lot of legwork. I noted your point. Hearing all the input, the comments, all in favor of Commissioner Maddox's motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same symbol. It passes unanimously. Great work, staff. Thank you for your patience, commissioners, your support today. And events, we look forward to meeting with School Board Member Jones and the mayor quickly on this issue. Commissioners, let's take a break until 6 o'clock, public hearing. We'll see you at that 6 o'clock.